We are, it is ten o'clock and I'm gonna read our special call meeting notice. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a special call meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. We are set at Friday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten a.m. in accordance with provisions of section twenty-one, three, twenty-one of Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two as amended. Mayor D. Lynn Sproul does hereby give notice of a special call meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville to meet on Friday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten a.m., Starkville's second floor conference room of Starkville City Hall located one-ten West Main, which is where we are. The specific subject of the meeting is as follows, and this is interviews for the position of city engineer. And so with that in mind, we are, we are up for business. We have, Alderman Rupp will not be with us. Alderman Carver may come in late, but we do have a quorum, and so we will proceed. And what I will do is we have two interviews that we have scheduled here. Both applicants are here. It's Mr. Christopher Williams and Mr. Cody Burnett. And so we will ask Mr. Williams if he would like to come join us first, if you would please. And we will let everybody proceed and ask questions and get to know his, get to know him. And there's Alderman Carver. Ben, if you would, we're gonna put the applicant there so that he will be able to kind of face everybody, if that's all right with you?
Yeah.
Chris, you can sit right there. It'll be great. Thank you. And we appreciate your attendance. This is Chris Williams. And you have around the table, you have our city clerk, Lisa Harden, Vice Mayor Roy Perkins, Alderman of Ward One, Ben Carver. You have City Attorney Chris Latimer. You have Alderman of Ward Seven, Henry Vaughn. Alderman of Ward Five, Stuart, uh, Stuart Beatty, sorry, Hampt Beatty. And then you have Mike Brooks, who's Alderman of Ward Four, and Sandra Sistrunk, the Alderman of Ward Two. So Mr. Williams is, for full disclosure, he is the husband of Mary Williams, who is working with special projects in the engineering department right now. So Mr. Williams, if you would be so kind as to kind of give us a little bit about yourself, we'll start off and let you do that, and then we'll go around with some questions.
Okay. Good morning, Ian. I've got a good meeting here walking in. So I'll cover the name and all that good stuff. I graduated from MSU in 'oh-six on a civil engineering degree. I had a P.E. as well in there. While at State, I worked as a student worker at Dial out the research lab, and then also co-opted for Spark and Stone. After college, I became an environmental engineer for a firm out of Jackson, specializing in solid waste, landfills, things along those lines. I also did residential developments, so subdivision, duplexes, those type of things. We went to make it back towards the coast for my wife, so I was able to go to Gulfport as well. She worked her part while there. I went to work for Brown Marshall Alexander, a firm on the coast after Katrina. And so as you can imagine, being a civil engineer after Katrina, on the coast, there was more work than everybody could do. So I did a lot of heavy civil work, so utilities and things along those lines. So it kind of was two big pots of money that we did work on. One was getting ready for folks moving off the coast, so they created a lot of infrastructure projects for, off of, in, off ITN to the north. So that was with HUD funds, so CDBG grant funds. So a lot of that were grant administration, things along those lines. And then the construction side of it also included getting utilities, easements, things along those lines. The other one was trying to repair all the damage. So I was over the project on Gulfport, everything from Highway forty-nine to the old B.A. Center. So we replaced all the utilities in that area. It's water, sewer, drainage, and then the streets and roads and things along those lines, to try to make the city whole after all the damage from the storm. Also there, I did Jones Park, which is at forty-nine and ninety. So I did the construction administration of that as well. After that kind of started to slow up, I worked with the Port Gulfport with BMA. I was over the Dupont project, which is a helminoid ore silo. So it was a ninety-two million dollar construction budget. We had five design firms that were under us as the lead engineer. Took about three years to do that. So we had to oversee the budget, construction and design budget for that project. So we used to do it on the budget side along those lines. So the type of projects that I worked down there was residential, commercial developments, hotels, things along those lines. I have that kind of design experience and construction side of that. Also got to work with MSU and the Stennis Space Center for their technology, science and technology center there. So I'm kind of used to having to coordinate with your neighbor there on that side of it. Also did industrial development. So we had clients for the Development Commission. So whenever large clients would come in, we would do feasibility studies to see what kind of utilities they needed, things along those lines. And then also building the infrastructure for those industries on that one. Just trying to think of what else. So make sure I try to do everything on that one. So I think that's kind of the highlights. Other stuff that I think is interesting, that's my, same, my resume. We started Engineers Without Borders Chapter on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. So we completed a pedestrian bridge in the jungles of Panama. So kids, before we built the bridge, they would have to come to the community. And the river would get up too high, so they couldn't go home. So they couldn't be with their families for all week. We were able to build a bridge in the community with community labor and coordination. So that way they were able to go home at night and spend time with their families that they getting cut off from communities and also a safety issue as far as being able to do that. So kind of something that I try to give back and try to do some, some good as well using my engineering knowledge.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll kick it off, and then we'll, then we'll go around, go by ward or however, whoever's got the most, most push here. Tell me a little bit, you haven't done any public sector work, is that correct?
The, I've done public sector work. I've been on the other side of the table. So all of those jobs that I mentioned, as far as all that, that was for utilities, so Harrison County Utility Authority. So that's who has all the utilities inside of the county area that's outside the incorporated areas, Gulfport, Biloxi, all that type of stuff. So we would do projects for those cities, for the city engineers, for that side of it. So my, so I'm sitting on the other side of the table doing that. So pretty much overseeing the project for the cities.
Okay, it's for the public sector, but it's not with, you didn't do any, you didn't do any intern work or anything in the public sector while you were, okay?
All of our stuff was for those, because with how much was going on, they couldn't, they can't do all that work in-house.
Right, sure.
Pretty much, we're almost like an extension of the city trying to oversee those projects.
Right, okay.
But I haven't been on that side.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So tell us why it is you want to come to work.
Um, I've got two, two little girls. The oldest is Amelia. She's going into the eighth grade this year in Starkville Academy. So I've only got, you know, four more years left before she graduates to get to really enjoy her, before she moves off maybe, or hopefully she'll stay close a little bit longer on that side of it. Job I have currently, I didn't even cover that, is environmental three sixty. So we do air permitting, water permitting, stormwater type of stuff. And so it's a regional job, and so it's about half travel. So being away from home, I want to try to get to where I can be home every night, get to enjoy my family a little bit more on that side. So that's, that's why I want to kind of be able to get close. And then the other reason is, what I do is completely different than what I did, and I really enjoyed construction side, getting to see projects come to fruition and getting to see, you know, fishing piers that I build and see fish, boats fish on them or see the bike paths and somebody's biking along in the splash pad and kids playing in it. So I enjoy getting to see that kind of more direct use of, of talents.
Yeah. So you've done splash pad?
We did. So Jones Park had a splash pad. So right across from Roundabout down there, we had a splash pad that we worked on on that side. So I was over the construction administration with that project.
Okay, cool. Well, and stormwater, you know, stormwater is one of the, a big deal for us these days, and it's a touchy, touchy, touchy issue. So you've worked with stormwater calculations and those sorts of things?
I have. We have done all that on there. So as y'all, as you know, the Mississippi Gulf Coast is extremely flat. So stormwater is a huge issue down there, as well as quality, because most sites down there have wetlands. So once you go to section four-one with a core, that keeps you into a water quality, not just quantity issue. So all those regulations, we had to, the vast majority of sites on the coast, you had to deal, of course, with quantity, but you also had to deal with quality, so making sure that you did BMPs and treatments before you let that water go to a pool. So all of those type things I've been involved in.
So the stormwater calculations for slopes and all that sort of business?
And that, you know, all our stuff was flat. So, you know, once we get up to something that actually has a little bit of slope, it'll be, all of our stuff was, everything was too flat. So y'all will have a different issue on that one. But I've done all of those on that side.
Yeah, okay. That seems to be a very technical but very needed talent.
Everything's modeled now, so on that side of it. So it's not near as bad trying to run hand calculations. The guy that I worked under, he makes you do everything by hand first and get a, an idea of it, and then use the computer model. So that way you just didn't have something kick out, just like, oh, that's gone. So it makes you learn the background of it.
Interesting. It sounds like shooting stars when I was flying for the Navy a long time ago, before you ever got to use the, the equipment. And I had one other question about the number of people you've managed. Have you talked about your management skills?
So, so as you can imagine, with a ninety-two million dollar project, there's a ton of other folks that are under that. So that one, I had five other engineering firms under me, and so, and then those folks under that, and then also RPRs, which are inspectors, just resident project representatives, is what those are. So having those folks, so I managed, I managed our contract and then their contracts under us, and then also our inspectors and their inspectors under us. And then as well as administrative staff, things along those lines. So how the consulting work is set up is you kind of do a team project. And so whenever you would have a project, you pull this engineer that's good at this, or this engineer from that, and then also subs. So we'd have structural engineers, geotechnical engineers, electrical engineers, and different ones along those lines. So that's, my management was actually for other companies, other firms, kind of like an umbrella side of it on that one. And then also I had the co-op program. I started that at BMA. So all the co-ops reported me, started that program. So I really liked the continuing education, trying to bring folks in on that one. So managing people, you know, we had more, we had folks that I would have to be over that didn't even technically work for us, if that makes sense. It was a team base, and then you go to the next team, go again, type of thing. So those are the folks I was managing, and then our employees as well.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll, I'll pass off. Alderman Carver?
I was gonna ask, Harrison County Utility Commission, like Mr. Swetman and that group.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been extremely aggressive down there, especially post-Katrina, but then for the last few years, I know y'all were especially aggressive on going back and a lot of the pumps and a lot of the stuff on the ground and redoing that.
They had, so yeah, we did a lot of interceptor projects. So what they have down there is they had a master plan. So that's something that I've worked on as well. All the cities, they'll have master plans whenever they're trying to, so they'll do a master plan with utilities or stormwater. And so whenever we would do a project, we'd implement those. If you're coming along on such and such street, we know there's a drainage issue for that type of thing. And so kind of implementing that. And so with those, the utility authority, they had a master plan for sewer water and all those type things, because they're kind of a backbone system. And so I did S-15 project form in the Opera Ville, which is about fifteen hundred gallon per minute lift station. So that's about twenty by twenty feet by, I think, probably twenty-five feet deep. So that's how hard of a lift station that was there. So those type projects is what the utility authority was doing. They're kind of looking big picture instead of like all the little cities and trying to, trying to regionalize it, try to have some efficiency.
I was gonna ask, just your total years of experience?
The 'oh-six and now since sixteen, I've been in the consulting side. So last three have been environmental. So I'd say about ten heavy civil with development and the rest environmental, which with a little bit of smattering of civil involved on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Alderman Sistrunk?
You say you've done some work with municipalities and governmental entities as, as the consultant. So you've seen a bit of what goes on?
I have, and the other side of it is, so the company that I work for worked across the three coastal counties. So I've done projects in Goshay, Ocean Springs, Biloxi, Hash Christian, then Harrison County, Hancock County, Jackson County. So I got to see how the different municipalities work, and then also, say, like specifications. All right, this says specifications. So Biloxi uses M.DOT red code, well, then Gulfport has their standards. So getting to go over those different ones, I got to see the different sides of it. So I got to see a bunch of different ways of getting the same, tackling the same project.
And that's from the engineering perspective. Once you're on the other side of the desk, as you said, you're gonna have a lot of consumers that, that you didn't deal with in the past. You're gonna have aldermen. You're gonna have constituents out in the community. You're gonna have developers. How do you balance all of that?
So I have had all those as clients, but sitting on the other side. So like the Area Three, City Three D project, it was going through the historic district of Gulfport. And so you're tearing up, everybody's, imagine tearing up the street sidewalk to sidewalk for the whole thing. So I've, I've touched every single person's lot in that whole area as far as that goes. So all of the, can, all of the, all of the citizens' concerns, those were what I dealt with on a day-to-day basis. So that part I've dealt with. And then also on the city council side, some cities, they would have where the councilmen, it all went through, like the city engineer and then went through, and then other ones they had where the councilmen were very involved in their areas when you had a project. So making sure that whenever an issue arises, it's brought to the councilman and then brought back to me. So I've had to, I've had to do that portion of it. So it kind of depends on what city and how they did that. So I've done, I've done that. We weren't, it wasn't instant as far as that goes on that side of it. So dealing with the citizens and taking care of their concerns, and knowing what you can and can't do, public property versus private property. And then also grant funds, you know, because whenever you come through with a project, and they're like, oh, my yard's flooded right here. Well, you know, we can't do work on, you know, public funds can't go to private property. And then also some of these things had constraints where you just could not adjust that. And, but doing that, what we also did was some non, so we did some funds that we would come along with a different project, and we actually would hear more things. So we would pay out a separate pot of money to, to do that while you're still in the particular area. So trying to work around and get the best money for your bug for cities. We did day in, day out, tried to be, where we take care of everything we could unless it just, you know, couldn't. That's what I suppose.
So you have had to tell people no, and you survived?
I did, I did. And we've had, you know, I've seen, everything that y'all have seen, I've seen the, you know, how folks are, and life was so, you know, this, it was definitely inconvenient, all of that issue with that construction.
This department covers a lot of territory, everything from potholes to design review for new projects, to big in-house projects that we're doing that you may be a little familiar with already. You will need to change hats often and rapidly. Speak to that.
So with being on the consulting side, at any one time, I'd have fifteen to twenty projects going on, anything from design through construction. So you might be rolling along on the design, and then somebody hits a fiber optic cable that cuts off service to downtown. And so then you gotta run out and get a hold of everybody and say, all right, put out this fire. And then, you know, come along, and then maybe somebody messed up their, their toilet doesn't flush because you hit the wrong line, or you didn't replace it, or that type of thing. You gotta do that. So the consulting side of it, we had to deal with the fires on that side of it, changing hats constantly. The main thing on that one's having a really good team and being able to delegate and help figure out triage of those issues. And then also being able to communicate with everybody, let everybody know, because, you know, hey, we've got all kinds of issues here. We can make the list of what's priority and what we can tackle. And boy, like, yes, that's important, but it's gonna take a minute to get to the top of it. So having a team, being able to delegate out those issues and kind of figure out, I think it's really important to be able to communicate.
Well, that, that leads to my, my last question, which is what's gonna make you successful in this job and in turn make this a good department for the City of Starkville?
Well, the one great thing is it's already in great, great shape. I've got several people that I know that have knowledge of the department, and they really talk highly about it. So inheriting a great foundation is, is already putting you, you know, head and shoulders above for your start. So if you're not having to fix a lot of things to start with and being able to grow from there, I think is really, really important. On that side, for me, like I said, I've got to see, you know, probably a dozen different municipalities, and how they operate and how they do different things. So being able to have that variety, you know, and have that experience, being able to bring those and say, well, I've seen this work over here, or how about this? So having those different ideas and be able to lean to it and be able to grow it and figure out what we want to take to the, take itself on that kind of department on that side. So having kind of had that broad brush stroke experience, I think, has made me be able to, to help bring that to the department.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Brooks?
I'm Mike Brooks. In, in, in the real world, I play as an appraiser. So I'm used to dealing with developers and realtors and contractors every day. So engineering department has a, a lot of concern for me, or is very important. You know, very impressive resume here. We have two highly qualified candidates. The other one, you know, is a member of the department now. So if you would just touch us a little bit on your understanding of what our department does and, you know, the responsibilities as a city engineer?
The, so y'all's department is a little bit unique, that you got a little bit of public works included into it, where most public works departments with the roads and drainage side of it. So that's a little bit unique as far as that goes. Everything else is pretty standard from what I've seen on the ones. So we review the design and then also the construction oversight. So, so there's some, some things that are a little bit different. But most of it's kind of the standard things that I was saying on that one, talking to people on there. The, like I said, everybody I've talked to spoke really highly about the team that y'all had in place around down there, that they really run a tight ship. And they do a great job as far as that goes. So look, so what exactly, what?
I just want to make sure you understood everything, because as Alderman Sistrunk said, you have to wear many hats.
Right, right. So like I said, the, all the design side, the oversight, I understand that really well. The public work side of it, on that portion of it, so the potholes and that, I didn't do a day in, day out. But like I know, the road manager that you got does a really wonderful job on that side of it. So I think I'll be able to learn from him on that, on that portion of it. So I think on that portion, I may be able to help with the engineering side, say the drainage issues, and looking at, all right, what parts of the city we have issues and kind of triage those and kind of help it and fight it out as far as that goes. So that's really the, the public works portion of it, the, the difference without, I've, I've been involved in.
Okay. And I, I'm trying to strike a nerve here, but in, in, a lot of our public eye are from the developer side, which is guys that I deal with daily. You know, our engineering department has, has had the reputation of being somewhat of an impediment to, to what we're trying to get done. And, and right or wrong, I'm not necessarily saying that's true, because there's always two sides to every story, you know. But, you know, I, I do know we've had some, some issues where for one reason or the other, it's taken in order, you know, a long amount of time to, to get plaques approved and that sort of stuff. So, you know, we, we gotta be in the customer service business here. How do we get to yes? What, what do you see is, you know, if you're managing this department, how would you, how can we get to yes? I mean, not giving away the, the house.
And I had to, so I've been on the other side of that. So I've helped developers, like I said, I've done motels, subdivisions, all kinds of stuff along those lines. So I'm the one that would usually take those plaques and take those designs to the city. As far as being the design consulting engineer, the way, and then the other side of it, so what I ran into is that you have to have everything that you want spelled out very clearly, so that way the developer knows what he has to get. You know, here's the benchmark, and here's what you have to get. What I ran into with some municipalities bringing something in, and you would do a design, and you would do a design per their code. And then they would come back and say, oh, I want this, or I want this, or I want this. Well, that's not what you asked for, and this isn't what you spelled out. And if we would know on the front side, it wouldn't have taken time. And so on the development side, everything is based off schedule. So
Time is money.
Time is money, because you're paying for your float on your loan. So that construction loan is eating you. You're having to do all of that. So, and then whenever they have to pay for an engineer to read to do something because you wanted something, that's costing them money as well. So what I see is to have a really good playbook of rules of here's what we want, and then hold that to it on that one. And there might be some areas of the city, so what I was saying before on some municipalities, that you'll have an area that you know has drainage issues. And so instead of having a twenty-five-year flood requirement, or not flood requirement, but detention, you know, twenty-five-year storm, design storm, you might have a fifty-year design storm in that area, because you know they'll have issues downstream. But if you tell the folks ahead of time, they can know that, and then they can build that into the project price, their performance and everything else. So I think the main thing is, like I said, being really apparent. Now, the other side, you're saying about developers complaining. I don't think that you will get rid of that, because I think that's, you know,
Nature of the beast.
It is the nature of the beast, is that, you know, they're trying to do that. And then the other side of it is, I think, the municipality, because as I've seen it go the other way as well, where the municipality let it have a wild west. And then what happens is the city is inheriting all this. So you develop the subdivision, and if it's not up to design and codes and everything as far as that sewer, and it starts failing, then it's on the hook for the city. So if you had a fifty-year design life, and you're replacing it at fifteen or twenty because of issues, drainage, sewer, everything else, that's coming out of your tax base. So there's one less part you can do, there's one less other thing you do, because you're sitting here doing that type of stuff. So trying to make sure that what you inherit from a developer is quality is very, very important. So I think the developer, pretty much what I'm saying is the city doesn't need to subsidize the developer. You need to be able to get a quality product that will last and do what it needs to be for, for the time that it's designed for. On the other side, you can't, you can't move the goalposts on a developer.
I, I think that's right. And I, right or wrong, I think there are anecdotes I hear that that's, you know, that's some of the issues that people have complained about. But I think you're right. Communication on the front end, you would got a good set of, we redone our UDC, we got a good set of code, just, you know, but, but also timing is, you know, do you have a, what do you see as, you know, for turning plaques around?
The, so really, like, same idea, is, you know, whatever you say you're gonna do, do it. That's the way I felt about it, because we would have, you would hit, hit the deadlines for a city, and then, oh, well, it didn't make that agenda. Well, I had all your stuff in town, you know, like, and then all of our stuff is based off of that. Now, the one issue that can do that, if everything hits at once, you only have so many staff and so much things, and then that would be a staffing issue or something else along those lines. So I don't know, I don't know the workload, you know, as far as like, you know, I don't know if it's cyclical or along those lines. So it really just depends on what you require and how long it sits. We had folks, so we had some cities that would take pretty cool months to go through the process, because you had to go through a preliminary, and then you had to wait for two weeks to get on the agenda, and you had to get that approved and this approved. So there might be a way to streamline some stuff along those lines. And I don't know your view, design as far as that goes for everything else. So it really just depends on how you set it up and on that one. And I think no matter what the time is, if you know it on the front end, then they have that built in.
Community touch, good community.
Yes, then they have it built in. So then they know, I've got, I've got to charge X square foot in my apartment to pay for it, because I had another in a month, because it took, this type of thing. So if you know that on the front side, no matter how you decide to set it up, they, they just need to be able to plan and to know that on the front side, that what it's gonna cost.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Ted, how you doing this, this morning? Oh, I gotta bless you. I'm, I'm all over the place. How many cities had combined on the coast, let's just say? Um, how many cities had combined on the coast, let's just say our side, I said Gulfport, Biloxi, Ocean Springs, Moss, not Mossport, Passau, those types of places, had combined public works departments where the engineering and it was all, and, you know, the utilities and all that was under one?
The, so they were all over the board. So Gulfport, how they had it originally set up was the engineering department with separate public works. Um, so Chris Raymond retired a few years ago and they actually combined the departments. And so the city engineer, public works directors, one position right now, um, on that side. And Biloxi, how they actually had it set up was public works. Um, the city engineer actually worked for the public works director until a few years ago, and then they pulled the engineering department out. And so how they had that set up was the city engineers did any design projects and the public works were straight maintenance. So anything that was maintenance was public works, anything that was new construction. So like they did all of the construction contracts or say the police department, fire department, any, any capital projects, the construction management went through the engineering and then any design projects went through there.
Was that even water and sewer went through the engineering?
Everything. So, um, so all, so pretty much if it was new construction, if it was new construction and went through engineering as far as that goes, and then once you got a project completed, then it got moved to public works and public works was straight maintenance. Um, and then they also, like I said, they did all the, the sides for, so say if you did a new fire station, your point of contact would be the engineering department, um, on that one. And so you'd have, they would be over the-
But all capital projects in Biloxi?
Went through that. And then all capital projects through Gulfport for the most part did that. A lot of the other cities were smaller, um, so say Long Beach, they actually had a private utility company that did theirs, I believe. Patch Christian, so some of these smaller places, what they would do is contract out their city engineers, um, so they would have a consulting firm, um, kind of handle that portion of it. And so Ocean Springs, what they do is they have a consulting firm that does all the design side and panels, and then they have one that does their review process. So for the city review, it actually goes to a consulting engineer to do review, and if it was a design, it would go through another, um, on there. So it, there's a million different ways and every city kind of does a difference. Like I said, they, and just in the brief time that I've worked, I've seen cities flip-flop to two or three different systems.
Um, in this part of the state, unlike South Mississippi, uh, the cities in South Mississippi don't buy electricity off the grid and resell, it's all in Pico down there, or, or, or an REA if you got, you know, in some-
They had Mississippi Power, um, so Mississippi Power, you know, has monopoly for a good bit of, um, the areas and then also coastal electric as far as that goes. So y'all are in, you know, y'all are in the electricity business where-
And everybody from here, if everybody here that buys from TDA, most of them are in the electric business. Um, how many of the cities, of these same cities you've talked about, had, who, which ones had the all of them who were involved in the, in the process versus those where they?
I don't know names on that one, but the, um, it didn't depend, so I know, uh, so the type of city governments, you know, they're supposed to be set up certain ways where it's actually chain of command on some stuff, and that really didn't depend, you know, like what I'm saying, is some strong mayor still had councilmen that were involved and they wanted them to be involved and they were fine with it, and then there was other places like it was, it was set up along those lines. Um, I'd probably say half to half.
Versus the weak mayor forms down there, that, that more direct involvement, we had weak mayor forms.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is a lot of strong mayor forms, but there's a lot of strong mayor forms that didn't act like a strong mayor form, um, as far as that goes. So what I'm saying is some, some councilmen would be really involved in a project, and then I had projects that'd be an award that you never saw the city councilman on, like they were involved. I had one that had a smart level and, uh, checking ADA slopes on the handicap ramps behind us. So I had, um, I had one councilman that was involved that much, um, and that was in the same strong mayor form on, on that side of it. So it's, um, it really depends on how the constituents and how the projects go. If a project goes smooth, you know, pretty much whenever they got phone calls, they, you know, they would come to me and, you know, get those phone calls. So it was all over the board, just like everybody's personalities, you know, by that side of it.
Our system works well. If we have a, a slight weakness to me, I'm new, I'm the newest person on the board. No, no. But I'm, I'm, I'm one of the newer persons on the board, is that, that-
Just stay low.
I proceeds after coming in that sometimes, and it wasn't the fault of anyone, it's just kind of the way the system's set up, that the engineer department and the public department were, I mean, the, the utilities department weren't necessarily coordinating or talking to each other on projects where, for instance, if, if we got a street that's got, we think, we don't know, but we got, you know, water lines need to be replaced under, something like that, well, you can't, you know, and, but, but the street on top of it's not in good shape.
Right.
You can't, you don't want to spend capital money on a street before you know what, you've got to go in and replace it. And, and let me ask you this, while, uh, the coast seemed to have, that's Katrina, endless amounts of money.
Uh, there's, it would seem like that.
Was there, was there wholesale replacement of utilities lines and things, or were they just going back into destroyed areas to do that?
The, so it was actually, there was a scientific way of designing where it was, so pretty much a storm surge, what they did was calculate where the storm surge was high enough to bust the pipes and mess up the gaskets along those lines. So pretty much from the railroad tracks, if you're familiar with it, railroad tracks south, um, for the most part, everything got replaced there. And then also some of the back bay areas, Biloxi, because the point's so low, everything, everything south of railroad tracks and then east of Keesler, every bit of that was replaced or actually still going on being replaced. Um, so the majority of it, it was, it was wholesale replacement because you can't, you couldn't go in and, and repair 10-foot of pipe and then move over and tie it back in type thing, it'd be more money. Um, and then also some cities, so there's two different ways to do FEMA money. One of it is they cut you a check, so you say, this is, is it called an approved project? Um, and so Biloxi did an approved project. So they had dozens and dozens of lift stations because as the city organically grows, they can move over, have another lift station move over, but if you did that whole city at once, you wouldn't design it like that. You would come in in much more efficient design, have one large lift station and everything grab them too. So FEMA did an approved project there, so they did that design and had it there. So some cities, what they did was FEMA, it was unlimited, but it was only repairable that was damaged. So you couldn't gold plate anything, you couldn't do whatever you had standardized before the storm is what they replaced it with. And so you would come along and replace exactly what you had. So if you had a 10-inch silver main or, you know, 8-inch water main, you replaced it one for one. But what that did was there was no chance of overrun, there was no chance that it was whatever you had there FEMA paid to replace it. Um, and so you had to watch those type things. You'd come along and it'd make more sense to do something approved, but you couldn't because that wasn't the rules of the game.
And as of time, I have, I'll defer.
I only say that because we're pushing our, pushing our hour.
Thank you for your-
Thank you, I don't mean to interrupt you. Um-
Mr. Wade, good morning. Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Wade, for coming and, but really I don't have nothing to say because y'all asked a lot of, a lot of things, I'm just taking it in.
Okay, I'm sorry, but Vice Mayor, I skipped you, I apologize, I was working my way down the table. Vice Mayor?
I fully understand the process, Mayor, y'all have done a great job back there.
Okay, all right. And Alderman, all right, Alderman Beatty, anything pertinent you wanted to come back to real quick?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Mr. Williams, we appreciate it and, um, we appreciate your time and your thoroughness and, um, we'll look forward to talking to you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet all of you.
Thank you so much. Please.
Good morning.
Hey, Tony, good morning. We don't have to introduce anybody to you, so you're-
Do you all need a resume?
We all have one, we all have one, thank you.
Good morning.
Well, what we'll start is let, let you give us kind of your approach to this and your sense of why you want to be here and why you want to, want the position, et cetera, so.
Sure. But y'all, so I've been here quite some time, for about eight years, and I've been the assistant city engineer for all of that time. And I think that to answer the question why I want to be here is that I, I love the city assistant city engineer position, I've done this for eight years, it's been an opportunity for me to really get the leads and really kind of learn some things that I wanted to learn. And spend some time kind of getting down to the details, but I think that in the past few years, I've realized that I don't want to be the assistant city engineer forever. It's not that there's anything wrong with it, it's a great position, but I think that I knew that I wanted to do something that was, um, you know, had the responsibility and was a big role. So Mr. Kemp has done a wonderful job and I sent him to a meeting until he retire. That was my assumption because this is a great job. Um, so I thought that if I wanted to move around, that I wanted to do somewhere outside the city hall. And so whenever Mr. Kemp announced that he was moving, certainly I was sad to lose his leadership, but I knew in the moment that I was going to apply. Um, I knew that this is where I wanted to be. And, um, of course, I've had time to talk to my family and this is not a fun job, maybe we've had lots to think about this and consider, but to me, this is the best piece of opportunity for me because I can keep all the benefits of the job that I have now that I enjoy so much while it banks on my career and making the most of myself and, you know, to use my expertise of the city in a way that provides more responsibility and, uh, more oversight and ownership. So that's why I applaud and, uh, this is exactly what I want to do.
Okay, all right. Anything else you want to share with the board before we do a roundtable question session?
Well, I, I, most of you know me pretty well, so I'll spare you all the background. I've been here eight years, product of university, sibling degree, licensed PE, so all of the requirements I feel like I need, but I want to be asked a couple of questions.
Okay. And so you, I'm correct, you've never worked in the private sector, right? You've always been in the public sector?
That's, that's correct. Um, now, a huge portion of my job was reviewing plans for the private sector and, you know, I have relationships with most of the private engineer firms. I, I've seen a lot of their process, but my bread and butter has been really the approval of their plans and, and working with them as consultants.
Okay. But like intern time, you didn't spend any time in the private sector when you were interning?
I did. For a couple of summers. It's been so long, it's really gone away from memory, but I spent some time with affirmative loadings and design work and a lot of testing and, uh, some more of the nitty-gritty side of the private sector. So I did that for about two years during college, uh, before I came to this position.
Okay. And while you were, while you've been doing work here, you have been focused on exactly what? So give us kind of, because a lot of us, you know, we know that you've been doing stuff that Edward would do this, but what exactly was it you've been doing for us?
Yes, ma'am. So, well, the title says a lot about it, is, is the assistant city engineer. So our, our task found a very similarly, but I'm really in a better support role for Edward. Um, one of the things I mentioned that I was able to use this position to hone some skills that I wanted to, is over the past few years, I've really been able to dive into the storm water portion. That's a huge topic for the city, you know, we have a lot of complaints about flooding, I can look around the table and I think every single person here has told me about some kind of flooding issue. And so, you know, really going through learning just the calculations and the numbers and then really using the software. You know, the city has come a long way in the past two or three years on the software that we have, the ability that we have to recreate and design that we're approving. And so I've had the chance, in fact, of working on a master's degree, which is, which is imminent, and that class is almost solely focused toward understanding this, this stormwater issue that we have. So that's one of the biggest things that I've done. Um, another portion of what I'll do is we have what's called DRC, that's Developer Review Committee. It's when the city reviews any development once they come to town. You know, they have to be an unified development code, and so it's this really long process from, you know, preliminary plat, all the way through construction to the end until we accept infrastructure. And so over the years, Edward has slowly kind of been portioning that out to me and then, you know, past, you know, year, past few months, I've completely taken over that portion of review and that goes all the way from seeing the plans and approving the inspected infrastructure. That's a big portion. Um, you know, I, I do a lot, a lot of the public, you know, Edward, obviously, plans that we get, he would ask me to go check candy the first time I get there for those and, um, at the first point of contact, you know. There's a lot of things we do, but that's kind of a note.
Thanks. Um, so from a, you didn't, you didn't ever engage in the street process, did you?
In the street department.
Yeah, no, no, well, that, yes, but I was saying like the construction projects, the streets, that wasn't something you-
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This is the first year I have been hunting this thing here. My first year in '14, Edward kind of taught me, but since '15 until this year, when Edward delegated his task, Mayor, we see the street department this year, but I've done that, have a wonderful relationship with those contractors and as far as, you know, anything from selecting the street to the quantities, the cost estimate, um, all the way from bidding, the bidding process of public procurement and then overseeing construction, the final payment, cradle to grave, I'm handling that budget. And, and really a lot of capital, whether it's drainage, sidewalk, streets, anywhere from design to inspection has been kind of my job.
Okay, all right. Alderman Carter?
Oh, yeah. First of all, I appreciate your plan. Anytime a city employee plows, I like to use it kind of to pick your brain and pick someone's brain and see if there's efficiencies or inefficiencies.
Sure.
So it's both of the, we kind of, kind of get toward that. So in a perfect world, I'm under my own, if you, you know, if you have anything you want to do within the department, what have you learned and what type of design standards would you write? Was there anything that you want to set up? What do you, if you, you know, you've been in the department for years, what are the top two or three things you say, hey, I, I wish I, if I had more control, this is what I would change?
That's a great question. Um, the first thing I'll say is some of the design standards, we, we had really come a long way since 2009, and I did have a large portion of government that, one, from the fact that one man couldn't do it, Edward couldn't do it alone, and second, it relied on my expertise, especially with stormwater erosion control. So, um, I had a chance to really offer or write a lot of those documents, which I'm proud of, and, you know, the unfortunate thing about the city is nobody wants to submit to a more difficult ordinance for free. You know, so we write these things as good as we can, we use different types of resources to make sure we're on par, but we don't really get a chance to see these in action until they're called, until you guys approve them, because nobody wants to submit to a higher standard if they don't have to. And so we're learning a lot of things, um, since the code update 2019, and I really have a list of things I'm keeping up, like, and this isn't working, we're missing this every time, or this is too difficult, we should pull back the standard on this. And so I have a lot of things that I'm looking at and doing some research on that I would like to update. Um, so that's one way I would answer the question. Um, you know, and another thing about, I guess, changes to the department or whatever, Mr. Kemp has done a really good job, I mean, I think he has a degree, he was hired for the general manager position, so I don't want to commit to anyone to change it for me. I think that's the tendency sometimes. I think the department has good synergy and, uh, we mesh well and that we're really on a good trajectory. And so I do want to, at least for the first year, just to keep us on that trajectory and keep it in the direction of winning, because I think it's a good one. Uh, but there's something I would change, I think that, um, and this is no fault to any specific person, it's just in general. I think that we have somehow got a reputation in the past that the engineering department can be difficult or tough on the hill. And, uh, you know, I hear the complaints and calls. And so my goal is always to provide the best level of quality infrastructure to the city. You know, my job is to follow the code, follow the plans to a T, you know, we, that's our, that's our contract. And I want to do the best job I can to make sure the city is the best part of it, but I also would love to remove the stigma that you can't work with those guys, or they're tough on everybody because they can't be. I think that really there's some opportunities for us to build relationships with people, um, set expectations early on, provide communication early on, and I think it's really probably the biggest thing for breaking our department is just to be, um, to have a reputation that we really work with. best level of quality infrastructures in the city. You know, my job is to follow the code, follow the plans, to the T. You know, we, that's our, that's our contract. And I want to do the best job I can to make sure the city is the best product. But I also would love to remove the stigma that you can't work with those guys, and they're tough on everybody because they can be. I think that really there's some opportunities for us to build relationships with people, um, set expectations early on, provide communication early on. And I think it's really probably the biggest thing for both of our departments is just to be, um, to have a reputation of really wonderful. And that's something I really desire to see happen for us.
Second question was exactly about that, but, um, it was, there has been a reputation in this department or the city that's hard to, uh, to work with, or maybe the benchmark had been moved at times. And I may ask the first question, do you think that's true? There's always going to be complaints, and we know that, but do you think there's some truth to that, the benchmark removed halfway through projects, or is that just something that comes with the territory and?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think that, um, it's really multifaceted, but I, anytime I have a conversation like this, I try to either go back to this unified development code requirement, or is it in the approved plans? And those are kind of my first guiding points. And the answer is no. Um, you know, there's things that occur sometimes in development that's unpredictable, it's unpredictable, you have no idea. And you have to balance the idea between, um, being fair and equitable developer while also undertaking the project. And like, it's not always a clear answer, it's not always black and white. And I think you have to use your best judgment to know what protects my citizens and what's fair. And even, you know, so far as the same was the right thing to do, which is always murder. But I try to rely on, um, my job is to protect the citizens as much as I can while doing so with a, you know, fair, equitable way to develop them. And so, those are my guidelines.
Do you think that the department, the department is adequately staffed with a number? Or do you think it needs to be in addition with employees long-term, in a perfect world?
Well, that's, no, that's a good question. They feel very understated at the moment that they were being gone. But, um, I think that there are probably some chances to maybe, if you lay all the duties on the table, so this duty could go here, and there's probably some restructuring that could be done, to be honest with you. Not that it's bad, but I think there's ways that more responsibilities could be given to more positions. I think that we probably have the staff. And to be honest with you, a lot of times here in these heady summer months, we're so busy, we can really take a long way with, with an intern or something like that. I think five years from now is very contentious. I didn't have the chance to, but I think if you have three really high-quality engineers, which we do, they have cats that can inspect, that's a pretty good team, especially from the fact that every mile we're getting on to people here, eight years ago, I came. So, um, I think we're in a good place. We just really need to keep people in roles.
Thank you. Alderman Sestro?
We do know you, and that's, that makes this go a little faster here. Um, you're, you're very familiar with everything that, that goes on, and we are very busy right now with just the normal things that we do. And then we have three major projects overlaid on top of all of that with the Bill Grant, the downtown redo, and the Parks Project. What's the role of consulting engineer in, in that? Uh, does that help her bring anything to the table? Um, I know that Mary Williams came to us as a temp project manager, Todd. Um, your thoughts about that?
Sure. Yeah, those are massive projects.
They are.
Multi-million dollar projects. And, um, something that we have always proud of our subones and departments being able to offer a product is equal to a consultant, okay? And that's true. I remember we have a five-team, and we only recently had three PEs in the past year or so. So, we are limited on what we can do, and we do a lot of other things in terms of design. We, we constantly are filling requests from constituents and different calls. We have the DRC process, so we do a lot. I think that for projects of that caliber, the consultant is necessary. I don't think that, not that we don't necessarily have the skill or knowledge, but a lot of time it's just the, the overload of how much work it takes to get those off the ground and oversight. I think the consultants are kind of beneficial. There's a lot somewhere in there, you know, what we try to say, we can do this house to get good product. I think Colonial was a good example. Um, the drainage project was from a really large project, but some of it we're doing in-house. For some of these that are major coreboard projects, restructuring, a lot of times we wouldn't even help. I think it's a good, personally good call to have those consultants jump on and explore their expertise.
I've, I've worked in the consultant world for internally, as an internal consultant and an external consultant. And there, there is a role for them, and it's being able to pick and choose when, when they bring something to the table that you can't manage here within. Um, I'm going to jump to the big question, which we've kind of danced around here, which is, what, what would you need, um, from us and from your staff to be successful as, as city engineer and to accomplish the things you've talked about, um, to, to make us one of those premier engineering departments in the state?
It's a great question. Um, I, I think obviously anybody that comes in this is going to have a bit of a learning curve. And, and one of the things I hope I bring to the tables that I think sure the learning curve substantially goes with my knowledge with the department. But really, I think that one of the things I've noticed over these past few months, as I have, um, not transitioned or taken duties from Edward, is that I do have a lot of questions. I know a lot about this department, but you don't know everything, and it's different than watching somebody build a fence than building a fence. So, there's some things I'm catching up on. But I think responsiveness I've had from the board when I have a question, or, hey, you think this is a good idea to do this project or should we not? Really just the communication for me, for you guys is probably the best thing that you're doing and the best you continue to do. Um, and then for my staff, I'm really proud of the staff we have. So, honestly, what I would like to do is just continue to support them as they support me. You know, they, they are helping me out. So, um, I feel like we're in a really good position for me to be successful. Uh, I would ask for patience as I work, because I don't, if anybody's going to come in and tell where Mr. Kemp was, because he's been here some. Um, but, you know, I, I believe that I can get there if you give the, with the patience and your help as I have questions, and I'm, I'm finding my way.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Brooks?
Uh, you mentioned consulting engineers, but, but, you know, we get, if we get bogged down, what's your thoughts on maybe using some contract engineer like Neil Shaper or some of those guys? You know, if you've got a bunch of plats or something needs to be reviewed or, or that sort of stuff, is that, is that something you'd consider, or is that something that you'd rather keep inside?
Sure, that's a good question. I think specifically for what I would consider the review version of the job, I think that, um, being the fact that we have created the UDC, or we have familiar with the UDC and what it requires, and really the way we do business, uh, that's something that I'm proud to be able to do. I'm proud to review development and, um, try to move people down the road as quickly as possible. I think that we would probably benefit more personally from consulting on projects, on design, would be my opinion. I think it's a great idea. And, you know, if we wind up starting those developments so much as we really might possibly get along with it, I think it's a great idea. But I feel now that we are able to maintain that development review, and that we, I feel like we've done excellent job at it. And so, that would be something I would hope to continue doing as much as possible. We can overlook and maybe off those some projects we have to consult. It seems to be throughout that I would favor.
Well, it's just that, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we, we have, we, that reputation we have, and, and one of them has been timeless, you know, that we've, we've, it's taken an inordinate amount of time to get some of these things reviewed, and then, and then we, we come back with some things that, that we expected to change, and then we, you know, the second review, we, we've added some to it. So, you know, I think that communication, you mentioned that earlier, I think we need to stick to the code, but I mean, your, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, and I would say that the department's convinced that there's a lot of departments to review, because essentially every, not every department that has bigger problems outside of the cart. But, um, we try to balance being quick and moving these things through, and also being very thorough and diligent. And it is a balance to, 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 to topple. But, um, I, I hope that if you were to ask some of the different developers and the engineers we've worked with, I can think of many, they would have a, a favorable thing to say about us. Now, I encourage you guys to ask, but, um, a lot of times, it's just it, it does take time. You know, it does. And I, I don't want to take too long and, um, you know, waste people's time. And I, I would say that I try to have everyone down on my mind, this has got to be done by hand. Usually for me, the first review might be two weeks. I think that's-
I think that's very fair, yeah.
Yes, it doesn't have to be you have the plate at once, but, um, I, I try to be as equitable a time as I can be, and it asks people with the patience, because these students take a lot of time. We often have thirty, forty pages of plans. And so, I, I don't think we hold up people for months. That would not be, maybe at one point we could have, but I think our reputation is certainly not better with this. Um, and in my opinion, I hope to continue that.
Well, you know, a lot of what I hear is, you know, when you really get down and dig into it, it's, eh, maybe stretched a little bit. But, but still, you know, there, when there's that much smoke out there, there's got to be a little bit of fire somewhere or something.
Well, I try to, the, the audience for me is I'll be able to defend, if I have to do anything that I've required, have a clear reason. Or not just because it's my opinion or I think this would look better, but I want to have a clear reason. This is one, working with us, and be able to stand on it.
Well, I know we, we've, you know, we got some tough issues now, and we were on one the other day, you know?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, I mean, we've kind of been thrown in the fire with some of that stuff, but I think you've done a good job with that.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Beatty?
Mr. Perdido.
Yes, sir.
Let's see, I, I, well, Mr. Perdido, I know that he, he's a very, very thorough person, also, of course, local people. Because I know when you deal with public, that's, that's, that's important, dealing with people on the issue, like stormwater, things like that. But that's not, it's my time to ask you questions. What I wanted to ask was, I still say in that, I kind of, kind of hit home, it sounds like I broke a record on this, but I have seen, since I've been on the board, a, it, it's somewhat, in some areas, that sometimes a lack of coordination between the engineering department and the utilities department on a comprehensive plan going forward with how the city is stalled, you know, spends its, the big money that we'll spend on infrastructure, streets, the water and sewer lines and stuff under it. And sometimes, those, those, those end of itself, a street project, we about to do a bond issue for ten million dollars worth of streets. On the water side, we about to do ten or twelve million dollars, twelve, thirteen million, twenty something million dollars worth of water and sewer. And trying to get the two departments together to work together, to coordinate and determine where the bit, the money would be best spent, how to coordinate the, the replacement of infrastructure before you do streets and, and where, and that kind, the kind of a comprehensive coordination. Tell me something about what you think about that, because I think that for us to, to go forward to be efficient and, and, and with, with people's money and, and stuff, that, that needs to be, um, it's important and something we might need to improve on, but I'll get your thoughts on that.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm joking, yeah, I know we got, but I know Mr. Kemp is in the same vein. You know, Mr. Kemp is in that role, which is helping. It doesn't say a lot about, um, you know, me, but he is there, we have a good working relationship. I think maybe, I go back to it, the, the problem always comes down to communication. And fortunately, this is something that has been a hot topic over the past year. It really helped me here is we overlay a street, water operates, or waterline needs repaired.
That's where I'm going.
What are we doing here? And so, I think the first thing is a weakness, and I can assure you that, that that has been something, a box that's been checked. Um, so really what it takes is us to get in the same room and resolve about the street listing, talk about what their goals are and what our goals are. And they don't always match, you know, but there's always a place you can overlap the two circles. Um, there's some really good staff that's been hired in utilities department that is really doing a good job. And I think that honestly, just communication and planning is the answer. It's not a magic answer, there's no magic potion, it's just getting ahead of it. And that's something we just continually have worked on to get better at, is how can we be as communicative as possible and perceive these problems. And that applies to everything, it applies to development, it applies to constituent clients, anything that comes up that's having a vision, that's looking forward and seeing what problems they're having, what they're doing. So, we're very sensitive to it, and we very much have that on the list. So, I would just say that it's something we're aware of, it's something we're, we're going to do better at.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Good. Thank you, sir. Uh, Vice Mayor Perkins?
Uh, no, Commissioner, I'm here. Uh, let me say something, I'll come on late back to this session. I, I listened to, um, uh, both of the candidates, but I'm not going